All right, everybody, it is six o'clock. Thank you. All right, I will call this meeting to order. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please? Moved by Councilor Day. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, carried? One set of minutes from March 4th, Committee of the Hole. There are no errors or missions. Can I have a motion to approve?
No, it is March 4th, the minutes are from February 19.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you. Wrong one down. I know, the freaking rookies. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Kobayashi. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Posed, carried? Thank you. We are now at public participation. So this is your opportunity to make a statement or ask a question. If you're here to speak about an agenda item, you will be given that opportunity at that time to also make a point or ask a question. So I will open up the floor now if anyone has some -- something to say before we get started. Seeing none, we will move right into council initiatives. All right. Well, moving right along then under new business, 6.1 Development Variance Permit, DVP 18-010. The development variance permit for 2915 Dickerson Place has been requested to vary the road cross-sections as detailed in the subdivision and development by law number 285, and that the applicant's proposal -- proposed variances include a full relaxation of all road improvement requirements on Dickerson Place except for street lighting and a full variance of all road improvement requirements on AD Road. The Director of Development Services isn't here tonight, however, our Director of Engineering and Public Works is. So if the public or committee have any questions for the Director, she's here for you. So with that, I'll give the applicant the first crack if you'd like to come and address Committee.
Thank you. My name is Dean Reed. I live at 2915 Dickerson Place and with my wife and family. And I have applied for and received a preliminary layout agreement for the property to subdivide it. And as part of that process, I'm sorry.
Hello?
Sorry. And as part of that development, I've had to engage an engineering firm for civil works. And having said that, I've almost exhausted my throat and voice. I'll pass it off to Mr. Michael Day from MSR Engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and counselors. I'm really pleased to be here tonight, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding the creation of one additional single-family home at Dickerson Place and AD Road. And I hope you'll forgive my pronunciation. I gather that there's a number of variants of how to say that particular name. Our client, Dean Reed, although he didn't have a -- he couldn't speak very well tonight, I know he expressed to me earlier he was extremely happy to see a number of counselors at the site over this last weekend and for which he asked me to express his sincere thanks. He was quite impressed, actually, that people had shown up. What Dean is proposing will fit well into the character of the existing homes and streetscape on the two facing streets, Dickerson Place and AD Road, despite which a number of variances from the bylaws will be required. For those who aren't familiar with what is proposed here, the property that Mr. Reed owns is a very large property with -- that faces two streets. On the one side, Dickerson Place, which is where his existing home faces, and then there's sort of his side yard, which is very large, and it faces the street behind, which is AD Road. This proposed -- the proposed house is in a fully developed area. There's very few infill opportunities along that street. This neighborhood is not likely, in our view, to see much change because of its level of development. Now, as you're aware, current City of Colwood engineering specifications require underground servicing, curb and gutter, and sidewalks. This neighborhood lacks such amenities today. Sewer services don't exist in this area currently, other than by onsite disposal under the Sewage System Regulation. Onsite disposal in this neighborhood, however, is really benefited by the large Colwood Glacier gravel deposit that lies underneath it. Some areas of Colwood are very challenged with disposal of septic effluent. This neighborhood is not one of those challenged areas. There's extremely good infiltration in that area, and having septic really shouldn't pose a problem. Similarly, there isn't a city stormwater collection system. There aren't, for example, catch basins and storm sewers. Instead, drainage is addressed by onsite drainage. And in this case, what Dean is proposing to do is install direct drainage from the road into seepage basins. So that would address any runoff concerns. Water services will be provided along with a fire hydrant through CRD Water. Any road works on Dickerson, in accordance with the engineering specifications, will result in a very short section of curb in the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac is shared by six other properties, which wouldn't have such curbs and gutters. And really, those other properties wouldn't have a finished road front unless there was major works undertaken by the city. Similarly, the AD Road improvements, as proposed, will be in keeping with the local area, not impacting adjacent residents, and really result in a better fit with how that neighborhood is. Lastly, we'd like to note that the street light, as proposed by Colwood, will be about $11,000 plus annual operation and maintenance costs, which would be borne by Colwood. So the $11,000 is a lot of money. The luminaire height and finish will offer diffused lighting to only a small portion of the cul-de-sac, whereas the existing luminaire, which is provided by BC Hydro, actually illuminates the better part of the whole cul-de-sac. So this would appear to potentially be a detriment compared to the existing luminaire, going to a smaller, lower fixture. And it looks like the other -- at least some of the other residents are rather keen to keep the existing light and keep that illumination there. So we certainly ask for council's reconsideration and ask -- and it is our hope that you'll ask staff to reconsider the matter of changing out that light. So in closing, we'd like to thank you for taking time to be onsite, for considering the recommendations from staff to have improvements in keeping with the surrounding area, and we ask for your reconsideration on the proposed luminaire changes. Thank you very much. Oh, and I would note, I think there are members from -- people from the neighborhood here who I believe are interested in speaking as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
So at this point, I will open it up to the public if you have any questions or comments on this particular application. And if you do, please make your way up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Nope, by all means.
Your worship and counsel. My name is Gord Danchella. I live on -- my wife and I live at 2909 AD, and we're basically going to be right across the street from where Dean's planning everything. Not far from our place on Mount View is that roundabout, the Colwood Roundabout, and they've got sidewalks and all that. And no disrespect to the planning and that, but I find them quite stupid to have sidewalks right there.
We do appreciate your honesty.
Yes. No disrespect.
No offense.
But it's -- they've got sidewalks, and just for those houses. There's no other sidewalks, and my wife and I, like, I don't want to see sidewalks there. I mean, minimal is best. And whatever -- what Dean's proposing, I'm totally okay with. I just, somewheres down the road, we may need, or we may -- it might be developed, but I think we'll be long past, long gone by then. But no, like, minimum for us is better. And I mean, we're going to be right there and got no issues with anything.
Great. Great, thank you, Gord. Yeah.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Just let me put my glasses on. My name is Dave Johnson, and I live at -- with my wife. We've lived in Colwood for many years. We bought the house in 1970, and we live at 2909 Dickerson Place. There is a group of us that -- who oppose removing of that Cobra-type light, and I agree with the engineer, if that's what the gentleman was, that at night, the Cobra light pretty well lights the full asphalt. And I asked the -- your representative, and he showed the lights that you're proposing, the ones from down by the school on Chosen Road, and the footprint of those lights, as I would agree with the other gentleman, is going to be very, very small. And I, as our group, don't agree that we should be removing the Cobra light. And because the lighting, we're just going to have less lighting. We have a petition here. I don't know if I'm allowed to hand it out. I only -- we only -- I only approached the people that live on the cul-de-sac, so would I be able to -- and you people distribute it? So as I say, I just approached the -- sorry, do I have to use this? Oh, okay. I'm usually loud enough at the soccer pitch, right, Dean, that I don't need to have a microphone. Anyway, and thank you very much for taking the copy. So we're basically appealing on a safety reason for the lighting there. The new light that you people are proposing is approximately 20 feet to the bottom, the -- to the ground, and the footprint will relate to its design and the height. The existing hydro pole-mounted Cobra light, as I'll refer to, is about 30 feet, and it has about an eight-foot arm, so that allows it to get the light out and pretty well cover the main part of the asphalt. So the new fixture, in my opinion, anyway, and I have been a contractor for a number of years, definitely is not going to cover the same area. The new fixtures, as I say, is not as tall, does not have the area that it'll cover, and as far as I'm concerned, we're really going to be going backwards. We've had all that light, and with a new light, we're just going to have less light. And being my age, my eyes aren't as good, so I think the light is great. When we first moved there years ago, we didn't have any streetlights. Now, I moved there in 1970. We had break-ins, we had gas being taken, we've even had wheels taken off a car. And since we've had the lights there, we've had very little trouble. Obviously, you're going to have the odd issue. So if the light has to go in, and there is no option for Mr. Reed, the one -- I know Mike, who's here tonight, Mike Gibson, when I talked to him earlier today, his point was he was against any lighting whatsoever. And -- but his attitude now is, and I want to make sure that he's listening here, that if -- and I'm not putting words in your mouth, right, Mike? Good. Yeah, yeah, I know you're watching his eyes, that if a light had to go in, leave well enough alone in our area, his suggestion, which I thought was very good, was to put a light -- I'm sorry, Dean, to put a light over by the path that leads at the end of AD, I'll call it, that goes across to the galloping goose. I don't know if that would fit or not if you had to do a light. The other option, I noticed that down on the Torre Road, there are some, I'll call them, black standards with the Cobra lights on them, that if you had to -- it had to be done, that that would probably satisfy if they -- if you did a study to make sure that the same lighting levels would be produced with that type of a light. And I know that's not going to help Dean, but anyway, I thank you on that part. Anyway, I just want to take the time to thank you people for running. I know there's just been a election, and to have to look after us in this area is quite a challenge at times, but anyway, I want to thank you very much. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, when I came down here, I saw two of your staff members. One was Aaron, and the other was Richard. And I know that they may have been thinking things in their head about just what does this guy want, but you would never have known that. They were very professional and accommodating for whatever I asked. So I want to thank you very much on that. And is there any questions that you want to direct to me as an owner, or no?
No, when it comes back to committee, if we do, we certainly will track you down, Dave.
Okay. But anyway, thank you very much for everything you're doing. Thank you very much for the opportunity for speaking.
Great. Thank you for the feedback. Appreciate it. All right, any further speakers? Any questions?
Hi, Ken Smith, 2908 Dickerson Place. Just wanted to say I signed the petition for leaving well enough alone on our cul-de-sac, but I entirely agree with the idea of putting a streetlight at the end of AD because we walk on the goose quite often, and it would really be helpful over there to have more streetlight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ken.
I live on AD, so I'll speak for my AD people. I can't speak for Dickerson and the light, but I would agree also with -- I'm like the road. I do work, but I would say that when I'm home, I'm the resident unofficial block watch. And I've called for dog bags because people just throw their poo bags right on the end. And so it's only took me two calls, and Colwood put one in, and they've been awesome about emptying it because in the summer it gets really hot, so I really appreciate that. But I do find that we have a lot of overnight people that park there. There's a lot of through traffic of what looks like suspicious activity. The RCMP could look me up and know how many times I call about it because I have young children, and I want it to be a safe neighborhood. So I would like to think that extra lighting at the road end, as well as a house, will keep people away from passing through for reasons other than dog walking and fitness. So that's my opinion.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, one last call before we come to committee. Seeing none, I'll bring it to committee. Committee is aware that there is a staff recommendation before us, and I'll open it up for discussion. Counselor Johnson, do I see you?
Thank you, your acting worship. I was one of the council members to walk by with yourself, Gord, and most of this does make sense. I've -- it's nice to hear from some of the neighbors that they're in support with maybe a few minor questions and possibly an amendment or two, but other than that, it looks like it's very doable. My question, I have a question for staff, if I might. I do notice, I'm looking at the recommendations, and it looks like most of the usual standards have been relaxed, including the lighting. Would -- has consideration been given to any of these ornamental lights at the end of AD Road, there would be my question.
Nikki.
Through the chair, are you -- so you're asking whether county and council could ask for a light at where the trail starts at the end of AD? Is that the question?
I noticed that it's in M, F and M, it's relaxed basically the ornamental lighting altogether. So I'm asking if during the course of this process, if a consideration was given to some lighting on the AD side of the property?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of that, but I am speaking on behalf of somebody else, so I can definitely ask that question.
I think, having walked that area, I can see, although it was the daylight, that that probably is a fairly dark spot, especially this time of year, where it just ends abruptly at the graveyard there, probably in the evening hours. And I would support some kind of lighting fixture at the end of that street. It appears that the neighbors would as well.
Thank you. Counselor Day.
Thank you. There's a -- I think it's good that the issue of the lighting has been brought up with AD Road because that was my consideration. I know that that's a frequent shortcut for cyclists and walkers, et cetera. And we do want to keep it a safe neighborhood by ensuring that the lighting is appropriate. In the financial considerations, one thing that wasn't mentioned, that I have seen mentioned in previous reports, is the cost savings from moving to an LED instead of whatever the other one is, the incandescent or halogen lighting. Because we have, in the past, found that there are considerable cost savings to the LED streetlights, so much so that a certain portion are paid for each year just by the cost savings of changing over some of our light standards to LEDs. So while I'm not sure which style of lighting would cast the best light for safety, I would like to know which lighting would cast the best light, and I would like to know if there are, you know, long-term savings to be had from switching to the LED style, whether it's this particular Cyclone luminaire or something that's mounted on the Davit arm, because I think there is an LED that's available for the Davit arm as well. So I realize that we might not have the answer here tonight, but if we could get that information before this comes forward to council, sitting as council, I think that would be very helpful to the discussion and to know if there is the possibility of putting that light in at the end of AD. Because the lighting, I think, is quite important to get it right. I've seen it be a problem both ways, that some community areas have had too much light from a streetlight, and that's been problematic for them, shining in a bedroom window, for example. And it's also been a problem the other way of not having enough light to make it feel safe for parking or whatever else happens. So I guess I'm not asking for the answer tonight because I realize we may not have it. We may need to do some research to get that information, but those are my questions as far as this goes.
Great. Thank you. Nikki, did you have anything to add?
So I have a few things to add. So just for clarification, the recommendation does indicate that there would be a ornamental streetlight on AD Road. So I'm just seeking clarification that perhaps it not be in front of the frontage itself, but a little further down the road. So just for clarification, that's what we're asking, correct?
Oh, well, I just want to clarify too, because it looks like I on AD Road says to vary it to zero. So I think--
On AD Road, I is to vary the cul-de-sac asphalt radius to a hammerhead turnaround facility on AD.
I is vary the ornamental street lighting luminaire pursuant to blah blah.
I believe that's for Dickerson? Is that Dickerson?
No, AD Road.
AD. Yeah, and then, okay, I seem to have a -- right. Oh, I see. Sorry, my apologies.
That's okay. Oh. Actually, no. No, I'm reading my notes.
So AD Road, I've got M is to vary the ornamental streetlight luminaire? And that's -- and that is to switch it to an LED format style light. That would be dark sky compliant. And yes, it is, as previous speakers have indicated, it would be -- it would have less of a radius. So the ornamental, excuse me, the ornamental streetlight would have about a 19-meter radius as opposed to a 25-meter radius for the lighting itself. But it is, LED lights appear to most people as brighter, so that there may be some corresponding difference there. The other reason that for -- that we tend to bring forward a DVP for street lighting is that the Davit arms we pay a lease rate on, it's an annual lease rate, the city pays for that, and it's between $500 and $700 for those Davit lights annually, and then we pay the electricity on top of that. So as development occurs, we do tend to ask for ornamental streetlights, then the city does own them, and they are LED, and they're also dark sky compliant. So there is a bit of a trade-off insofar as how the light will spread and how much it'll spread upward as well.
Thank you, and I do apologize, my notes here say L for that part, so now I see there's a bit of a disconnect with the online agenda. Stuart.
Thank you, your acting worship. So I'm an infrastructure guy. I like infrastructure. I think it's good. And I went, drove, had a look at this place, and boy, there's a place that doesn't need any more infrastructure. This is it. It's a nice, quiet little neighborhood of short streets. Everybody's happy. You hear the neighbors, they're happy. They do suggest, which struck me as wise, that perhaps some lighting at the end of AD where the trail takes off would be appropriate. The Davit arm on Dickerson will, my understanding is, will get converted to LED over time as the whole city, you know, does through that process that we talked about, so maybe it won't be coincident with the subdivision, but it'll happen in its due course in an efficient and orderly manner. So I'd be very happy to see this proposal go through roughly as stated, but without an ornamental streetlight on Dickerson, but relocate one to the -- somewhere in the vicinity of the trail where it meets AD Road. I think that would be the appropriate way to go on this development.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any first-time speakers? Nope. Counselor Day.
Sorry, just on my agenda package, under AD Road, in the recommendation, it says no light on AD Road.
That's correct.
So I just want to be clear that -- and that seemed to not be quite what I heard from the Director of Engineering.
So what I'm hearing, if committee is supportive of moving forward with the recommendation, that they would rather have the ornamental light on AD Road, so essentially F would become to vary it to zero, and then M would be to have the ornamental light installed. And yes, we do, for sure.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
We're -- unfortunately, we're now at committee, and so we're -- Counselor Johnson?
I'll make that motion, yep.
Marcy, are you? Make sense? Okay, good. So it is the recommendation before us. The only exception is the ornamental light, which is in F, will move down to where M is. So it'll be located on AD Road, and no ornamental lighting on Dickerson Place. So it'll be located on 80 Road and no ornamental lighting on Dickerson Place. Okay, and then the discussion I heard is we will try to locate it or have it located as close to the trail into the cemetery as possible. We do have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed? Carried? Thank you. Next item is the 2019 Police Operating Budget. And this comes on the heels of the GD SAC staffing report that we were privy to last week. So I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Generally, we discuss the police operating budget earlier on in the process. The timing, we're a little bit out of sync here for a number of factors. First of all, our OIC, Mr. Todd Preston is with us today, relatively new to the detachment and he's sure been hard at work. So in November 2018, we generated, we initiated the General Duties Staffing Assessment Report. The report had actually been requested of the RCMP for some time. The OIC was able to get it moving at a bit quicker pace. So that work was conducted between November of 2018 and January 2019. As a result of the GD SAC report, the conclusions that staff have drawn from it is that there's an immediate need to increase the total operating detachment by nine full-time members. However, that's not all of Colwood's responsibility. We'll talk about that in the upcoming slides. Additionally, the OIC conducted some forecasts using our demographic studies as well as our partners' demographic studies and there's, which resulted in an indication that there will be an additional four officers required by the end of 2023 for a total detachment size of 94. So Colwood's share of the additional nine and additional four is two and which is coupled with the municipal employee component of 1.75. Staff believe that this can be funded with new construction taxation revenue and I'll discuss what that means in a bit more detail, something that often goes misunderstood in the coming slides. So the methodology in terms of determining whether or not we should be increasing policing, the police operating budget, is as follows. First of all, we want to determine what is the appropriate detachment size of the detachment and that we believe that the GD SAC is the correct methodology to determine that. Then we need to ensure that Colwood is paying an equitable portion of that. How do we split the bill with our municipal partners? That can be the most difficult step at some times. Third step is to determine how Colwood should go about funding that increase. Do we have the financial capacity to do that and who should be paid for the increase? And step four is the follow-through. So I'm going to walk council and the public through these steps as they are undertaken. So step one, determine the appropriate department size. As I mentioned, there's a number of, the preferred way to determine the appropriate detachment size is the GD SAC report. We believe it's the most defensible methodology. Some of the other methodologies often discussed are crime rate. Staff do not believe that crime rate is an indication of appropriate size. Much of the work that the policing services provide do not manifest themselves in crime, in the crime rate. And it's also as crime rates improve, would that be used as a mechanism to, for lack of a better term, punish protective services for doing a good, a good job? So we don't believe that that is an appropriate indicator of appropriate, of appropriate attachment size. Second, commonly referred to methodology is called population ratio. And again, staff do not support this methodology. Every year, the BC government compiles stats that show how many officers each community has as a proportion of their population. However, every community is different. The policing needs in those communities are significantly different and those differences aren't manifested in the population ratio. And simply put, how much we want to pay is not an indicator of appropriate size. So if we want to have a cheap bill, that's not necessarily, that doesn't mean that that's the right size. Now, we do have some flexibility to work with our policing services to determine service levels. There's a minimum level of policing protection that the policing service has to provide by statute and council can't interfere with that. However, council can provide escalated services in many of the proactive units as well as setting service standards such as response time and proactive time used. So we believe the General Duty Staffing Assessment is the most appropriate methodology. It tabulates in exhaustive detail the work performed by the General Duty Constables in what municipality they worked in and what the work specifically was. The General Duty Constables plus the admin, I call them administrative, basically the sergeants, the staff sergeants, the corporals that provide oversight to the General Duty Constables typically make up about 50% of the detachment size. And that ratio can vary quite a bit, but we can use that ratio to infer what the total detachment size should be based on the GD SAC report. So the inspector surveyed about five different detachments and the range was between 46 and 58%, I believe, of the proportion of GD Constables to other units. So this is what, this is what the detachment composition looks like. So I put the GD Constables in blue. There are men and women in blue, boots on the ground. And there's the managers, like myself. The proactive units, the non-core units, they make up a very similar size on the other side of the equation. So the non-core units include crime reduction, traffic, the bike unit and community policing. And you can see how those units can somewhat be impacted by council's desire expressed in terms of service levels. So the GD SAC report determined that this is how many General Duty Constables and admin staff we should have. So we need an additional four on that side of the equation and we can infer that there's an additional five needed on the other side of the equation to maintain current service levels. So that's, that's where we get our plus nine. And that's not, again, that's not just Colwood. That's between our municipal partners and ourselves. So as mentioned, Colwood, Colwood's portion of that, if we're maintaining the same proportion of payment as we have historically, is an extra two FTEs and 1.75 municipal employees. A bit of a last-minute request here, but we can discuss nearing the end of the presentation. The inspector has asked if we could escalate the .25 requested for 2022 and put that into 2019 instead. So we'll formally make that request to the committee at the end of the presentation here. So essentially, what would be asked is .75 in 2019 and 1.0 in 2021 for the municipal employee portion. Next step, we have to ask ourselves, is the amount that Colwood paying for its police services fair? And currently, all we do is we simply write a letter to the province and say we want 16.6 employees, strength size. That's, that's what we, that's what we do. And there's no real consideration of equity and fairness in that. So I always pose the question, and this question is posed quite often, should we be paying based on time spent on Colwood files? And staff would say, no, because policing is not a user fee. We ask our taxpayers to pay for protective services based on their assessed value. So that's essentially a measure of their ability to pay, not how much they use policing services. So rather than sending a bill to someone who called 911 for $20,000 for the visit, we get them to pay their portion based on assessed value. So I would say it would be inappropriate for Colwood to say, well, we only want to pay 70% of the total bill because that's all that we're using the RCMP for. So a couple of different ways that we can fairly portion protective services, very similar to how we ask our taxpayers to pay for their portion of protective services, would be with assessed value and population or converted assessment. So we can use those as a basis to determine if what's being asked of us is reasonably fair and equitable. And it turns out it's pretty fair and equitable. So if you look at our current contribution of the total detachment, it's about 20.49%. And we're being asked to increase our contribution to about 20.7% after it's all said and done. And when we look at, if we were to split the bill based on assessment of population, we would be paying 22.75%. And if we were to pay with converted assessment, we would be paying 20.35%. And these aren't novel ideas. You know, we pay for a lot of our regional services with these formulas, which is why I specifically put them here, so council can get a sense of what's being asked is fair. Take, for instance, the Greater Victoria Public Library requisition. We pay for that based on half converted assessment and half population. We pay for the police building based on assessment and population. So it's a, it's a typical generally accepted formula as being fair. Incidentally, the time spent on Colwood files, according to the 2017 GD SAC report, was 17.68%. And we happen to be paying 20.5%. So it's not, there's no red flags there. We're getting, we're getting reasonable service. However, you notice that the provincial contribution, there are some red flags there. There are some significant differences between what the, what the province could be expected to pay and they are paying. So for instance, they're currently paying 8.6% of the bill and that would fall if everyone else contributed some members and the province doesn't contribute more members versus 10.4% in the assessment. And there is a large discrepancy between the time that is spent in provincial jurisdictions. So for instance, Machozen and Highlands, they make up part of the jurisdiction of the Westshore RCMP. And because those municipalities are less than $5,000, the province pays for the policing force. They provide the strength for those municipalities. So the time spent in Highlands, Machozen and other provincial jurisdictions and areas like the Malahat, part of the Wonduffu electoral area, they spend a lot of time there. And that, that makes sense, you know, it takes more time to go out to Machozen, to Highlands, to the, to the Wonduffu electoral district. But if the province wanted to provide their fair contribution, there's certainly a strong case to be made that more strength should be provided by the province. Step three is a funding method. So an average RCMP officer, the cost of him or her right now is approximately $180,000. That includes overhead, the heating, the training, sick pay, everything. And so it's a significant cost. Protective services and the expansion of protective services is an excellent candidate for new construction taxation revenue. I'll just pause real quick and explain what I mean by new construction taxation revenue. I heard a question posed to the mayor on the, on the radio today about this. And some folks seem to think that new construction taxation revenue means that we're charging developers directly to help pay for it. It's not the case. Essentially, what happens is when we build new homes in Colwood, we can now derive taxes from those homes for the first time. They didn't exist before. So a home that was built last year, we can now tax this year. We call that new construction taxation revenue. It's the first time that that home will be subject to property taxes and it's an opportunity for us to strategically direct where those taxes are paying. New homes, new buildings, new development impact our bottom line. We have new tax revenue, but we also have new expenses that are a result of those new homes. And protective services is a prime example of that. Every body that we add is a potential person who's going to need protective services. So in the draft financial plan, I've indicated that a budget of $200,000 in new construction taxation revenue. I've got revised estimates of that kindly from BC Assessment as late as last week. We actually expect $340,000 in new construction taxation, taxation revenue. So for the 2019 ASK, we have more than enough of that revenue to pay for the ASK. We recently adopted a sustainable infrastructure replacement policy that says any leftover new construction taxation revenue gets put into the transport to the reserve budget for future infrastructure replacement. So this would take away from that budget. However, the 12-year plan for sustainable infrastructure doesn't anticipate any additional funds from new taxation revenue. So it won't stop us from making progress according to that plan. So as mentioned, I expect to be, I expect that Colwood will be able to fund their request of two officers with new construction taxation revenue as well as the, what's, the 2.0 municipal employees over the next five years. There's no certainty to that, however, we, we do know we have a number of developments underway. Colwood Corners, Royal Bay, Two Waters, that will most likely be subject to taxes starting next year. And so I do expect that there will be some non-market change or new construction taxation revenue to pay for that. So if council supports this, pass a resolution to be considered by council here at the committee level. The next step would be to just ensure that funding increases in the financial plan. And I'll, I'll take the committee's actions today as a strong signal to what should show up in the financial plan and ultimately results in the financial plan by law. Then we'll send a letter to the province saying this is our requested strength for 2019. And we'll work with our detachment and our detachment partners to request additional strength from the province, which is already underweight today. So that concludes the presentation. As mentioned, the inspector in charge of the Westshore detachment is here to answer questions and we're happy to hear from you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris. And the, the change that, that the director had indicated bumping up the FTE would be reflected in the recommendation in Roman numeral V, which would change the year from 2022 to 2019, increasing that .25 FTE this year. Inspector, did you have anything to add before the public?
You know, I think I'll, maybe it's best I answer some questions first here. And I just want to say, first of all, your worship and council, it's been an absolute godsend working with your CFO here. He is a very switched-on individual, so thank you very much for that. But no, I know there's probably some questions around, around council here and perhaps from the crowd here. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Great. Thank you. At this point, I will open it up to the public if you have any questions or comments for our CFO or the inspector. And I just want to cheer on the BC Assessment for giving us some great news. Hey, BC Assessment. With that, seeing nobody wants to comment from the public, we'll bring it to committee. Counselor Kobiyashi.
Just a comment. I, I got to attend the presentation, the GD SAC presentation outstanding. And I think it's fair. I mean, and what's being proposed is extremely fair. And so no complaints on my side. I'm going to support the recommendation. I'm really glad that we are addressing it with the province. I don't think the province is doing their fair share for those outliers. And but other than that, I, I think it was probably the most logical pieces of data that I've seen so far. So that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got Mayor Martin, Counselor Jensen, Counselor Parkinson, and then Counselor Day.
Thank you, Chair. I have three questions. The first was, I just wanted to go back to your first slide, Christopher, and it was just in regards to the four officers for 2023. And I just want to make sure, holy, sorry. Where am I? Second, yeah. So I just, oh, yeah, for 23. So can I just ensure that we're still comparing apples to apples? So when we talk about adding four officers in 2023, that's total or is that just general duty officers? Like, am I actually looking at eight with, with that four? Or is that just two of general duty officers and then two that are support system?
Through, through the chair, yes, it's four total.
Okay, thank you. So that, that was the first thing I wanted to clarify. The second question is, I'm going to look to the inspector and perhaps you could just explain to council why you would like to bump up that officer or that, that .75 now versus?
Well, we wanted to actually bump it up just in general because to hire a .25 or a half-time makes it very difficult at the office there. makes it very, uh, difficult at the office there, just given the, uh, job, job specific work that a lot of the municipal employees, uh, have to do. Uh, we don't have, uh, very many, if any, there, there by, uh, by exception, uh, part-time employees over there. And the municipal, the head of municipal employees there, the, Jen Brown has asked that we don't do point two five, uh, point five positions. It's just a, it's an absolute nightmare for her for scheduling and for training. And so we, what we want to do is full-time employee. So you're here for full-time unless it's by exception.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
You bet.
And then, uh, the final, this is more of a statement and I guess I struggle with, with our Director of Financing because I understand his rationale where you don't want to look, uh, necessarily at call, callouts and, and funding on callouts. However, when I look at this roughly, what I'm looking at is that we, Callwood has seventeen percent of the callouts. We pay roughly twenty percent of it. But the province has nineteen percent of the callouts and they only pay eight percent. And so I, that's when you have to start comparing and saying, well, well, listen, yeah, we, I, I understand why we need to work as a group. But from a provincial standpoint, I mean, that's less than half of the funding that the province should be contributing into it when I look at the numbers, unless I'm reading it wrong. And, uh, and so, I mean, we can mix the numbers however we want. You know, on the, on the most conservative side, I see that the province is underfunding Westshore RCMP by about thirty percent. Um, at the extreme, if you look at it from a service level standpoint, they're underfunding it by more than a hundred, or excuse me, more than fifty percent. Because, um, you know, they're getting a lot of callouts that the rest of, uh, the communities are having to subsidize for that. So I think that's an important message that, that not only Callwood, but also Langford and View Royal need to be messaging out to the province. That they need to start being a little more responsible and understand the communities that they're funding as well.
If I understand, uh, that you've crafted a letter, um, a joint letter?
We have. Yeah. So it's, I'm not sure if, I, I would look, actually look to staff to see if it was sent to the province today.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Counselor Jansen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as you might imagine, this is all very near and dear to my heart, but, uh, I appreciate, uh, the work that's been done in this. I, I know it's a, a small slice of the pie, so we look forward to sort of, uh, a more robust analysis over an extended period of time in the, in the next few years. Uh, I'm wholeheartedly in support of acquiring more help as needed. Uh, I like the way it's been framed that, uh, it's not just throwing money at patrol. It's also, uh, municipal employees, uh, the admin, uh, which is the trend in the sector nowadays is to support officers fully, uh, on the backend so that they can, uh, increase that thirteen percent of unfettered, uh, or unassigned time that we look to increase. Uh, so I do look forward to watching that thirteen percent grow in the next few years. I do agree with, uh, the comments of his worship that we are subsidizing the smaller communities. And it's the nature of it. Uh, we, it is a bit of an insurance policy and because it's an integrated, um, combined, uh, detachment, department, whatever, whatever you want to call it, that, uh, um, you know, these, these resources, uh, are drawn to, uh, the greatest need. So if something happens in our community, well, we'll draw resources that perhaps Langford is paying for or the province is paying for. And we'll all benefit from that. Uh, so I do agree that we should all pay our share, including the province. And I'm, I'm sure our mayors, uh, our local mayors are going to work over our, our, uh, our elected, uh, MLAs and, uh, we happen to be, uh, rightly placed, uh, very near to, uh, our premier's riding. So I'm sure it'll get the attention it deserves. Uh, so kudos to you guys. Uh, one, uh, two things I had here. Uh, you had mentioned to me in the past that you were exploring some technical solutions to help free up officer time too. Can, can you expand on some of those, uh, ideas that you had?
Yeah. So, um, a number of initiatives. First off, one of the recommendations in here and, and, um, I implemented it as soon as we got to, or I got to the detachment is the creation of an e-watch. So we have four watches. Uh, they work four on, four off, twelve hour shifts, um, eleven hour nights, some of them. And, but do we need to have members, the same amount of members working at three, four in the morning that we do at three, four in the afternoon? We have that, uh, that calls for service greatly increased between about ten in the morning and probably six at night. So we've created, we've taken one member off each watch. Instead of having ten members working, uh, around the clock, we have nine members. And now we have four members that are working, uh, in the afternoon shifts from, from, uh, ten o'clock in the morning till six or eight at night, whenever they've got it in that range. And so that's for peak policing hours. And so by doing so, hopefully you'll be able to, um, free up some, uh, free time during those periods as well. Uh, one of the other initiatives, and it just got passed, uh, today, uh, from Langford, they're, they're contributing MEs too. And, and to your, uh, to your note there about the backend support, uh, we're hiring three, um, retired, uh, sergeants, staff sergeants, inspectors in that range type thing that, that know files that have been around policing a long period of time. And the idea there, the spirit is that we'll be able to, um, write off a lot of the, the files that are sitting there that they just need to be written off. We have to card people and carding people is, you know, putting people's names and addresses and everything else in there. You're paying a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per police officer right now. So to have sixty thousand dollars, sixty-five, seventy thousand dollar employees doing the same work that you don't need a hundred and eighty thousand dollar police officer to do that. So I'm really trying to move in that sort of direction where we can, we can focus the resources in areas that need police officers. And the backend of things, we can move and, and shift and do better things. Another example would be guards. And I'm coming to you with the proposal here and I think it's going to cost about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars, um, to switch over our, our guard process. We're one of the only places in, that I know of, of this size detachment that doesn't have full-time guards. We have, uh, two guards working, um, night, they, we got the night shift covered off, but during the daytime, it's a call-out process. You get seven hundred prisoners a year here. So there's, it's, it's really unheard of not to have full-time guards. But the spirit behind that as well is if we hire the municipal employees, we can have them booking the prisoners instead of the member sitting behind the computer for twenty minutes, half an hour. Again, do you want a sixty thousand dollar, uh, person, um, doing that type of work or do you want a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? So the idea is the member comes in, they pat them down, uh, they make sure that, uh, everything's safe. They put them in a cell and the next twenty, twenty-five minutes, let's have a guard type them and put them in. They don't, the member doesn't need to be there. The member can go up and start typing the report or get back on the road and create more visibility. So there's, those are just a number, but I'm going to continue anytime I can see a, um, inefficiency, inefficiency. I want to make sure that I've got, uh, I have the ability and, and the nibbleness to be able to make that change and, and adapt. Because, uh, I really don't feel that policing is sustainable, uh, at this current rate. When you look around some of the big cities, um, the cost of policing is going up and up and up. And we need to look at innovative ways here to, to try to offset that cost and the, the time.
I had one further, uh, thought, uh, and I made a note to myself here that, uh, your agency is headed for, um, becoming a unionized workplace, which then would lead to a, uh, the first contract negotiation with their employer. Do you have any sense on a timeframe for that? And, uh, and I guess part two to that is when the next provincial contract may negotiate and whether we need to start planning and budgeting for future salary increases?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, uh, anticipate likely over the next twelve to eighteen months, somewhere in that range. Um, and to make it clear, RCMP officers at, at, at large, um, for the most part, we all feel we're, we're very adequately paid. The only thing that we want is wage parity. So if you're doing the same job as somebody, uh, down, down the street, they're getting paid ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars more for, for doing the identical job. So, um, I always like to make that clear because, you know, when somebody says you're getting paid, you know, as a constable, eighty thousand dollars or sergeant, you know, close to a hundred thousand dollars, and, and people are saying, geez, you're greedy, you know, uh, you know, you're asking for pay raises. It's not that we don't think that, uh, we're, we're, we're paid well. We are paid well, to be clear. Um, the only thing that we're asking for is wage parity. So what you need to do is you need to stop these guys here from getting pay raises. Uh,
That wasn't directed at Purge, yes, and was it?
Uh, that was a dagger. Yes.
Might have to bring this. Maybe get this scabble out.
I know. Hey, I know.
Hey, everybody, get our violins.
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you.
And on that note, thank you, uh, and the Metro Toronto Police just agreed to an eleven percent pay increase.
Yeah, like I said, it's not, I, I truly believe it, it really is not sustainable and they keep doing this sort of thing. Uh, wage, wages do not keep up with that. So, but anyways.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Parkinson and then Counselor Day.
Thank you. And, uh, and, and thank you for your words. I think like my colleagues, I feel we're in good hands here and it's, uh, uh, happy to hear, uh, what you're saying and, and the answers. I, I do apologize that I didn't make the review that, uh, Counselor Kobiyashi, uh, started talking about. Uh, would have been, uh, useful for me. Um, like the others, I was very impressed with the, with the report, the level of detail and the analysis that went into it. But as I read it, I, I, it, it did strike me as a little strange that you're going into a huge level of detail on, on callouts and, and, and areas and time and everything like that. And then you say, so we need this many general duty constables and then we'll double it for staff size. And then I finally got to the end and I saw some little appendix B, which had four sort of, uh, comparables, where it looked like doubling was not an unreasonable number to go of the ratio of, uh, I think they've been called overhead to general duty, however we want to describe it. And so I was sort of, I guess I was sort of going, well, you know, it's okay. You know, you don't have the same analysis of, of the other half of this force as you do in the first half. So I was sort of saying, well, looking at those numbers, maybe fifty percent were getting off easy because some of those numbers were higher. But then I, as always, listened to our Director of Finance. He says, well, there's no comparables, you know, each, each community is different. So you have to look at each community. So, so I would suggest that while the report for what it did was, was amazing and thorough, uh, perhaps that sort of add-on could use a little further work in, uh, in, in years to come as, as you analysis, analyze this a little bit more. Um, yes, I noticed like the others did, the, the sort of the deficiency in what the, uh, the province seems to do and, uh, what the, the call for your service versus the, uh, what they pay. So, uh, that would be interesting. Um, I also noticed on, on page six of your report, the, uh, the chart there. Callwood Municipal, where we're talking of, and it's, uh, I didn't really have a title on the chart, but, um, it says, uh, established full-time equivalents nine and proposed full-time equivalent cost sharing six. But I, I don't think that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about.
Well, it, it's sorry, I, just to make, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
So what this report does is, is this shows how many general duty constables. So this is not corporals, sergeant and the staff sergeant. So this is strictly the people that are going to the calls. And then what you have on top of this is the supervisors, the watch commander, and then the operations NCO. That's on the one side of the house like we talked about. So really the numbers of what you've got here, this is just saying, we need this many, uh, members. And then because you guys are a blended detachment, now you have to break it up. Uh, and now you have to say, okay, well, you pay for, you know, um, Vimcu, which is the integrated homicide team. And you've got a share in that as well. And you're paying for crime reduction unit and you're paying for drug section. So really when it says the established is nine, but you only should have to cover six, they're right. So you have three STE, but you don't have anybody currently on our crime reduction team. And so when you look at that, okay, well, there's your three, you know, two members there and maybe you only have, uh, one person on general investigations where you should have three or four. And so that's where the numbers, like I said, in a blended detachment, that's when you're going to see, and shame on me. I actually, um, drafted up our org chart in color so I could bring it and I didn't bring it. Next time I will bring it for you. And so you'll be able to see exactly who's paying for what, but it really makes no difference. What, what the difference here is, is that you guys are probably in one of the most well-placed, um, situations I've seen. Uh, and I've been in Alberta, Yukon and all over, uh, British Columbia as well. Because you're sharing the, the costs of, of the municipalities, uh, you, you guys, like, uh, Counselor Jansen said, whether a call comes here or there, you've got services going to it. You have one detachment. You have one, uh, municipal manager. You have one detachment commander. You have, everything's blended. You one cell block, which are brutally expensive, uh, to run and to operate and to maintain. So you guys really are, the only thing you guys were missing was having a baseline. Uh, and now because of the general duty or, or sorry, the GD SAC, you're finally able to come up with a baseline. And if you can accept the baseline that I've, I provided, um, and I'll, I'll touch on why I think it's, it's fair. And if anything, I think it's, um, probably on the lower end of a baseline. But because your communities are what they are, um, you know, this isn't Williams Lake or Prince George. We live in a, we're very fortunate to live in the types of communities we do. Um, for instance, community policing, we have, uh, for the last year, we've had two people. Well, those two people are also responsible for school liaison. So we've had two people for twenty-seven schools. Uh, so as you can imagine, and that's not their sole job is to go and do, do school liaison. They're in charge of all the volunteers. They're in charge of all the different, uh, volunteer, the programs, the youth at risk, the mental health programs. There's so many. So we're actually adding a, a third one on there and, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be picking that individual, uh, later this week, actually. Uh, so we're gonna have three for that because I, coming to this area and seeing, like I said, the type of community, it's so important that we be so engaged in, in the community. So you're going to see one more there. We have, um, three traffic members for eighty thousand people. That's probably the area that I think the next member should go to because we get a lot of traffic complaints. You can, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me here, but I would venture to say it's at the top of the list probably for complaints. So when people are complaining on Lagoon Road or, um, you know, whatever other areas there are, there, there's countless, uh, areas. Now I, I hope to be able to be a little more nimble and be able to get those resources so I can speak to your constituents a little more loudly and clearly. Uh, our crime reduction unit, which is also your drug section, you have six members there, a corporal and five constables. So that's for the whole eighty thousand people, you've got six members dealing proactive, trying to target your prolific, prolific offenders. Um, you've got four people in bike unit, a corporal and three constables. I'd like to get that up to five just because it's been so incredibly successful. They've probably arrested, uh, twenty, over twenty in Callwood's area. And sixty, seventy in total here since August, I think they started. They have been an absolute godsend and community I know has been, uh, very loud and clear how much they appreciate having the police on the trails. Uh, and you know, we've had some significant, serious, uh, sexual assaults in the past on those trails. So I think it's a value well spent. Um, the area that we really need to, to beef up when we talk about the members is, is our general investigation section. And I think, uh, our municipal counterparts, you'll see it in the paper all the time. These are cybercrime. These are, they deal with everything from attempt murders to frauds. We just picked up a million dollar fraud. Uh, we, cybercrime, um, I think you saw in the paper there, we had twenty, uh, sexual predator files, pedophile files there. Uh, those things take a tremendous amount of time to investigate. And they're not ones that you can go, yeah, we'll get to that when we get to that. I mean, these are people at risk, right? So, um, the reason I articulate that is because it is kind of a gray area when you look at and say, well, what is this other fifty percent? That's a lot of members, but that's a few. I, there's, there is some other ones. There are violence in relationship. We have a member in there. We've got, uh, First Nations policing. We've got all sorts of other, uh, small units there. But, um, that kind of gives you, or hopefully paints a, a picture of some of the, the other work that we're doing, uh, outside of general duty.
Yeah. Yeah, no, thank you. I, I appreciate that. And I certainly wasn't pretending that you got too many people or anything. So, uh, that's good. Uh, uh, can I ask, can I not sure whether to ask you or, or somebody on the table, the Westshore RCMP Services Committee, I saw a reference somewhere. Now what is that?
Chris, RCU?
Through, through the chair. Um, what it is, is a committee that was supposed to have been struck a number of years ago. And it was really the, um, participating municipalities getting together to review police services on a regular basis. Um, View Royal has asked that it be reactivated and they sent us the, um, draft set of, um, um, outline of how it's supposed to be worked, so the, how it's supposed to work. So there's a good chance we might activate it for the first time. Okay, so.
Uh, sorry, if I can, if I can add to that. Um, and that's kind of online with what I've been asking for when I got here. I said, you know, I actually would prefer, uh, some people call me crazy, a police board in a sense where I want to hear from all the municipalities, but it's so difficult because there's seven communities here, um, and three primaries that I'm able to hear kind of a unified message on how you, what you would like to see. If you want to see more of this or you want to see more of that, or you're not happy or you are happy. Or you guys talk about servicing, whatever the case may be. It's just a great platform for that. So I would strongly encourage, uh, I'm really hoping that that does get some legs again here. And then that, uh, I'll be invited to some of those meetings and some of them will be obviously closed doors.
Yeah, because, uh, as I, as I went through this stuff and, and some of the stuff coming up later in the agenda, when we look at, um, furnishings and rearranging of the police station and that, and, and, and we look further into our, our packages as we get and we look at the growth coming for the community and we think, well, that's going to be reflected in the RCMP over time. And the building is going to mean what? Do you know, is it going to become, um, undersized in, at some point in the not-too-distant future? Is, uh, does it make sense to hive off some of the municipalities to different areas rather than try to? municipalities to different areas rather than try to increase the size of the building? And some questions like that that were rolling through my mind, I don't think they're appropriate necessarily for the discussion tonight. But they're things that I guess we all have to start to think about and chew on a little bit. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We've got Counselor Day, and I will be looking for a motion after this, please.
Okay, so just a couple of questions. First of all, I can't remember the percentages off the top of my head, but to our Director of Finance, what is the, what percent of our budget is our RCMP services? It is one of the largest, I know.
Through the chair, do some quick math in my mind. So the overall RCMP contract plus the amount we pay for municipal employees is about $3 million. Operating budget, about 19 million. So was that 15%, 15, 20%? So yes, it composes the largest component of our budget.
So my concern with that is that when we're talking about the needs for RCMP budget and we're looking to our new taxation revenue to pay for that, I think it's really important that we remember that that new taxation is only new taxation in the first year that we get it. And it does need to cover all of the things that we have to cover, including recreation, libraries, our roads, all of the things that we need to do. So I think it's really, it's both important to fund our RCP sufficient to do what they need to do, but it's also important to keep that in mind in terms of the overall resources that we have and that we need to resource it all. For the municipal employees, on page three of the report, it says that the 90% of the cost is paid by us because the federal government pays 10%. They do not pay 10% of those municipal employees. So that's really important to remember. And they don't pay anything when we have to upgrade the furniture or increase the size of the building. So it's just important, I think, to keep that perspective in terms of that we still need to leave room in our budget for all of the things that our community needs. But with that said, I do, I have participated several times. I wasn't able to make the GD SAC staffing meeting in View Royal because of our prior commitment. But I have participated as those formulas were being created and had some input into that. And recently, I've been doing an awful lot of research on policing costs throughout the capital region, mostly because of my role in chairing the Family Court Committee and the issue that's been much in the news lately with Victoria Police Department having to cut their school liaison officers because there's such a difficulty. So when I was looking at the history of the last 20 years of police funding, there is a major report that was done by the province back in 2010 on the finance structure for Victoria Police and exactly came down to that issue of between, you know, what is your operational requirement to meet the calls that come into your department? And what is your policing, I guess you'd call it prevention services more than anything else, but the, the school liaison officers, the community liaison, the bike patrols, all the things that don't fit into those general duty staffing positions? And how do you make the case? Because I think it's a really important case to be made because if you don't have that sense in your community that your police are partners that you can talk to and seek out for assistance, things can really get off the rails. So I'm just looking not from a point of view of trying to nitpick, but from the point of view of trying to say, we need to fund it all. One of the areas that's been difficult and goes back to about 2003 is the mobile youth services team. And I'm just wanting to hear from the inspector in terms of what does this budget do for us working with those types of files?
We contribute financially to IMCERT.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we have, we can refer files there. They come out, not just them. We have a whole bunch of integrated units, obviously. So to that end, I don't know what else I can say other than we do contribute and they are involved.
So financially, we've been contributing since day one. And one of the, you know, originally it was conceived of, the mobile youth services team was going to be a team. It ended up being one member who works throughout the region. And their purpose is really to track exploitation of youth. And those files, the most recent statistics show that they are way up on Vancouver Island. And they're up by, you know, 150%. And it's a real concern for, well, for police and for families. Because what I'm hearing at Family Court is that a huge percentage of their files are young addicted people who are, you know, probably living in a group home or a foster home situation and who are chronically going missing and they're, and they're finding them and taking them home.
Counselor Day, sorry to interrupt, but I wonder if we can kind of just rein it in a wee bit, just to speak specifically about the increase in FTE, but not get into too much of the weeds about specific services.
Right.
Notwithstanding, you know, it's a good discussion, but I just want to make sure we stick, stick to the topic.
So the number of files are way up. And to assist with that, Pacific Centre Family Services has actually dedicated a counselor to work with the mobile youth services team. So I'm just wondering if with the additional FTEs that are contemplated in this report, if there will be any additional resources supporting the mobile youth services team?
No, that, well, no, to answer your question, no. However, we are putting another one in community policing, like I was saying. And some of the services that they provide locally here is they work with the mental health worker at the hospital. And when they're being released, a lot of the youth, they will call and say, hey, this individual's being released. And Corporal French will go down, attend, and take that individual, go for a coffee, go sit down with them and try to see what their plan is. So we are, we are working with mental health, people at risk, the youth. They work with youth probation, the victim services. You know, there is so much stuff that they're doing involving the youth and the elderly. And to that end, I don't know if I mentioned it before, that you know, some of the other initiatives we've done, Valentine's Day, we went to the old folks home and we were, we bought flowers and had members in Red Surge and chocolates and we went around and handing out that sort of thing. The anti-bullying day, the other day, they're bringing the dogs around the school. So I know you're concerned with mental health and youth. And I can assure you, there is nothing more near and dear to me, especially in these types of communities. And I can assure you, with the resources, any extra resources, any free time that we have on that side of the fence in that area of policing will be dedicated to mental health and to youth.
Great. So I just want to applaud you for looking at different ways of doing things. When we, when you mention, you know, perhaps being able to staff your guardroom differently to save money, I think that's a really good initiative. It was probably back in 2003, four, when we started funding municipal employees to, because it made more sense to fund somebody who's, who's working on the file with, with a lower rate than somebody who's all trained up to carry a gun and wear armor. So it does make a lot of sense. And I'm, I'm generally very supportive of where this is going. But I, I think that we need to be really mindful that this is our best guess of what you're going to need. And I do know that a lot of it is statistically driven cases, very high profile cases do tend to come up statistically throughout. And our community has been supportive of all of the integrated units that respond to that. So with that, I would make the recommendation as amended to not include the partial person because that makes perfect sense to me that if that's not an efficient way to work.
Thank you, Counselor Day. So just changing Roman numeral five to 2019. Director of Finance?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, to clarify what the request was, and I stated it incorrectly originally.
Okay.
It's to take the .25 from 2022, add it to the 2019, and also an additional .25. So essentially what's being asked is a 1.0 in 2019 and a 1.0 in 2021 for the municipal employees.
Great.
Sorry, that was clear as mud. So we're, one is increasing by one this year, two is increasing by another one in 2021, and including, including the municipal employee number three at .75?
One.
Oh, it's at one. Okay. And then. Yeah, so it's by one in 2019, the municipal employees going up by one in 2019, and then going up again by one in 2021. And are we still, what about the .25 for 2022?
It disappears.
It disappears. Okay. Great.
All right. Everyone clear on the motion? Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Parkinson?
Sorry. And while I'm supportive of what's going on here, there is that sort of elephant in the room of the province not bucking up. I think we probably all agree with that. And I'm just wondering if we should limit our commitments to 2019 to, frankly, if I was the province and I saw we had committed out to 2023, I'd be less reluctant, I'd be more reluctant to reach for my checkbook. So, you know, would this, would these numbers alter if the province came and paid a larger share? I would suspect they would. So maybe we don't want to go too far down this path.
Mr. Pease?
Through the chair. I think the best thing is that a plan has been put in front of us that's looking into the future by a number of years. If the province is going to react, it'll take them absolutely ages. So I would suggest that we follow the motion as indicated through 2019 to 2022.
I consider myself duly chastened and I will withdraw my remarks.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. Perhaps after this, we could have a discussion about putting forward a resolution to UBCM because we're not alone in needing the province to look at their provincial components. So I don't think they're going to do it for us and not for anybody else. So we may as well get our partners on board.
Great. Don't see any further discussion. So on the motion, all those in favor? Posed? Carried unanimously? Unanimously? Counselor Day, were you looking for that motion now or in a further?
Perhaps what I could suggest is that we work on the wording and bring it to our next committee of the whole to put forward as a, as a resolution to UBCM. I'm just trying to think what the deadline is. Deadline's passed to go to AVICC already. So it will probably have to come forward as a late resolution. So I don't see the point in rushing it. May as well get the wording right.
I think that's absolutely reasonable. And so staff can probably bring back a draft resolution for us to consider. Thank you for that. We will move on to 6.3, 2019 Police Capital Budget. Director of Finance?
Mr. Chair, I haven't prepared a presentation, but available to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, with that, I'll just open it up. Nope, nobody in the public. Chris, you're normally quiet. Yeah, so seeing nobody in the public that wants to speak, bring it to committee. Mayor Martin?
Thank you. I'll just make a motion for council to receive the draft 2019 Police Capital Budget.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed? Carry? 6.4, the 2019-2023 financial plan. This is your opportunity for, for committee to further discuss the financial plan before staff prepare the bylaw. So I'll open it up to the public if you have any questions generally on the financial plan. Not seeing any. So we'll come back to committee. Mayor Martin?
Sorry, trying to work from this premise of always having the motion. Is it just to receive it tonight?
Is that what you're looking for, Chris? Or just general comment?
Yes, I'm actually not going to request that. There's any resolution unless it is to amend what's been presented.
So you don't need a motion now? Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. On page 13 of the financial plan, there are a couple of things that are listed as not identified in the financial plan. One is to clarify and update a working definition of affordable housing, which has not been identified. It's 9.2.2. And also 10.3.1, right below that, G greenhouse gas emissions for multimodal transportation system is listed as an immediate concern to develop updated community energy and emissions plan regarding new targets for Callwood on climate action. And it has not been identified in the plan. And then on the next page, there are two more immediate ones there, long-term health and environmentally sensitive areas and indigenous plant species are, and we just haven't, there's a few things where we just don't have anything identified in the financial plan. And I'm just wondering if that's an oversight or if there's just more work required?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It, no, it's not an oversight. It's a deliberate, it's deliberate. For the first time, we are showing many of the goals that are endorsed by council in various different plans, official community plan being a significant document endorsed by council. And be honest about where our resourcing is in able to achieve, in being able to achieve these. And absent of direct council direction, it's not, some of these actions are not quantified in the financial plan. What staff really, really need in order to prioritize that is, is direction from, from council as a result of the strategic planning. Staff anticipate that there's certain priorities that this council are going to want to see that may have offset previously endorsed plans, especially the official community plan. But it's important that we don't lose sight of the goals that we've set, which is why we've integrated those, those into the financial plan. And we're being realistic about what we're able to achieve as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, if I may suggest then that, oh, I see another hand over.
Did you want to continue on your line or?
No, I was just going to suggest that, but I think the interim CEO may have more information for us.
I'm sorry, Christopher.
Through the chair to Counselor Day. The big issue here, as Chris has pointed out, there's a problem with, you know, our capacity. The big issue here, as Chris has pointed out, there's a problem with, you know, our capacity to be able to do a lot of these things. What we've arranged in the middle of this month is a strategic review by all the department heads of all our strategic plans and all our strategic documents to see exactly what they cover, when they were created. Does the title correctly identify what it's covering? And from that, we should be able to give you some sort of, the whole of council, some sort of idea of what sort of work we have to do, what sort of resources are available. And there's a possibility that we will come to council and direct some of the 2019 budget towards getting some of these plans in place. I'll just give you an example, the, the DCC bylaw. It's all these fundamental documents that we need before we can really move ahead at some sort of speed. So this will be coming to council, probably in a working environment, so that you get a full idea of what's in front of us for the next four years.
Thank you.
Great. I think that works for, for me at this point in time. I, I know that we're, we're working on it. I, as I was reading through these, a few things came to mind that, that would answer some of the problems. So I look forward to sharing that when we work together as a council.
Great. Thank you. Oh, councillor Parkinson?
I noticed when we get down to the capital plan, capital expenditures, there are a number of projects there. Machosen Road, Hatley to Kotlow design, Painter Road upgrades design. I think we had Latoria Road was designed, Machosen Road Wish Art to Painter design. So it sounds like, you know, which I support completely, we're keeping the engineers in town employed, but we're not, we're not building anything. And that just seems like we're going to stock our shelves with proposed projects? Or should we not put in construction dollars for any and all of those projects?
Chris?
Through the chair. Yeah, so what I was going to introduce in terms of finalizing the financial plan is there's a number of purchases or expenditures that were sort of flagged by council either collectively or by, by individual councillors during the process, that we want some more information before we commit to this sort of thing. Design, these designs was one of those, one of those things. And I believe one of the resolutions that the committee asked of council was to provide council with a snapshot of in what order we're doing these things. And so some of these are underway, and there's nothing we can do. They are approved in the 2018 financial plan. They're going to be completed, or they're, or they're, they've been put out to tender. But council will still have some flexibility and input into that. Frankly, absent of council direction to do some of these large infrastructure projects, staff aren't going to presumptively include things like that in the financial plan. Really, strategic plan is going to be a major input into this. If something occurs where we get clear council direction to move forward on sidewalks, sewers, what, what, take your pick through the year, the financial plan could be amended, but realistically speaking, those sort of projects probably wouldn't get underway in 2019 anyways.
So it's probably fair to say then, Chris, that perhaps even the 2020 budget might be the most appropriate time to start throwing some money into the budget that is realistic, because that's when infrastructure projects will probably most likely be able to get underway. And, but in the meantime, we can apply for grants once the, some of the design drawings come back and, and whatnot. But what I'm hearing you say is that there is a possibility, a realistic possibility to get started on the physical construction of some of that infrastructure that I think we all support.
I mean, we could, we could really roll up our sleeves and drop a lot of things if, if that was the will of council, and it was very clear what it is that council wants to accomplish with those infrastructure dollars. But speaking realistically, planning has to go, engagement has to go into these things, legal review, those things take time. So some of the planning that needs to take place here will provide a very clear input into the 2020 financial plan.
Stuart?
I hear you, and I understand that, but if there are projects that are currently getting designed, it seems to me there should be a mirroring of that with a proposed construction of those projects. Again, just designing for the sake of designing is not that useful. So, so I think if, if there are, and I, and I understand some of these were committed before and have probably started, in which case I would think we should have a, a construction cost estimate at some, some period. Not necessarily this year, maybe next year or something, but we should say, if it's in design, we should expect to build it. And probably, I would go so far as to say, if we think we're going to put it in design because we have a budget item for it, we should also put a budget item in for, here's what about what it might cost and about when we might build it. Again, I recognize all that could be fungible, I suppose is a good word, but, but we shouldn't be more realistic than just saying, we're going to design something and then what.
Chris?
Thank you, councillor Parkinson, and it brings up a good thought, which I intended to, to pass along. So a lot of these, I, I remember the committee asking, where are all these designs coming from? Where's the plans? What are we prioritizing? And the answer is, you know, a lot of it comes from, for instance, a transportation master plan. And there's, there's a plan to update our transportation master plan. I'm really recommending that when we prepare the terms of reference for that transportation master plan, we provide, we ask that they provide very high-level estimates of what the actual cost of the infrastructure is, so that when we bring it to council and they endorse this transportation master plan, is it, are we, are you truly asking us to go out and build that infrastructure, because now you know what the cost is? And also, it would give council the opportunity to really prioritize and say, yes, we want that infrastructure to actually be done. Now, on the side of design, some designs are being done so that we can take advantage of, of grant programs. That's not the exclusive reason why we would prepare a design. But take, for example, the recent Bike BC grant that expired in February. They required a shovel-ready project. We did not have a shovel-ready project. We weren't able to apply for that. And that, and that's a shame, because a lot of the transportation master plan projects would support exactly what the Bike BC grant program was providing. But do we need 10 shovel-ready projects? No, I, I, I think I get what you're saying there.
Great. All right, not seeing any further discussion. We have no public participation for the final public participation? Like, what the heck, Chris? I know. Next, next meeting is March the 18th, same place, same time. And can I have a motion to adjourn, please, by councillor Johnson? All those in favor, posed, carry?